At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for November 11th, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the roll call show. I think we're just missing Chief Vogel tonight. And we will move on to the approval of the minutes from October 28th, 2019.
I'll move the minutes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We'll move on to the approval of the bills this evening.
I'll move the bills. I'll support.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. On to the attorney bills this evening.
I'll move the attorney bills.
I'll support.
I've got some, um...
Discussion, Councilmember Kivell?
Yeah. This has kind of been an ongoing concern for the last four months in particular. We're looking at a deficit of almost 35 hours, so I mean, it's like an hour and a quarter a day that we're not getting our service. So, I'd like us to have some kind of, I don't know, a meeting of the minds where, you know, have Paul, maybe you and Paul get together and see if there's some solution. The stuff that, the three previous months that Tim had left us, it was like three months and there was 91 hours that hadn't been fulfilled in the retainer.
Councilmember Kivell, just one moment. I think, Paul, do you have an update on this?
Yes, the city attorney and their staff and I met a couple of weeks ago to discuss this, and we will be bringing something before city council at our next meeting regarding proposed change in the agreement to go from a standard number of hours to an hourly rate. And there will also be some items we'll be addressing prior month's billings as well. So, I will actually have that for you in next week's, or this week's manager's report, and we will discuss it at the next council meeting on the agenda.
Well, I've got more to say about this. So, we've always had more than 80 hours, or at least 80 hours' worth of work, and more often than not, there was a likelihood that we could have, because we have an awful lot of ordinance language that is archaic and needs to be addressed. So, the idea that we've left now 120 hours on the table, personally, I would like to see us satisfied from last month, where we end up being reimbursed that time, and 80% of the three previous months, I'd like to see back. I mean, we don't, we can't do anything about with Tim being gone at the same time. Johnson-Rozati has got to have a deeper well than to be able to bill us for 80 hours and not have manpower enough to be able to satisfy what our needs are, knowing full well that there's a table of things that they could be working on in that time.
Yes, the attorney and I did meet to discuss all the items that needed to be addressed, and as, I can let Lisa address this, but we are addressing prior month's meetings regarding the underbilling of the total number of hours. So, that will be addressed. If she wants to add, I'm not sure if she wants to add anything else regarding our meetings or not.
Yeah, I mean, and we could talk about this next week when it's on the agenda, but we went through the, since the day the contract was signed in June of 2018, and we calculated the hours billed from them all the way to present. And what we've really, the conclusion we reached was that there was a period in time, around that time, where Tim was having to do a lot of the assistance day-to-day, which is why he had billed close to or above the 80 hours for a couple of those months. Some of those months were significantly over 80 hours. But since Paul's been on board, you haven't needed that day-to-day assistance. And so, you don't need 80 hours every month of work to be dedicated to you. We have knocked through probably three-quarters of that outstanding list. I understand that you probably have more things that you're going to want to be done, but I think that rather than having this retainer, which, I've been here for several months, Glenn, so I know how much this is bothering you, and I know it bothers everybody, but I think it's, we've discussed a more appropriate approach that would be fair to everybody, is we go to an hourly system, where you pay us for the hours we work, and that's it. We get paid for the hours we work, and there's no, there's going to be no, at least I don't believe, any more frustration with the billing. And if Paul has any concerns with work, I'm sure Paul will tell me about getting work done.
Well, that's my concern.
That's really not an issue.
That's my concern, because with an 80-hour retainer, the expectation is to be dancing very closely to that 80 hours, and we've always had plenty of things to attend to that would have been able to be performed in that 80 hours. So, unless you see some precipitous drop-off of our, you know, forecasted activity, I'm hoping that we're still working in that same area, time-wise. So, okay, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Yep. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll support.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Approval of tonight's consent agenda. The only thing that is on that this evening is a charitable gaming license for the South Lion High School Boys Lacrosse Booster Club.
I move the consent agenda.
I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We will now move on to the certification of the election, and Lisa?
Hey, the election was certified early Thursday morning, so we have three new council members to swear an oath, and a mayor. Oh, no, new council members, one new council member. So, Dan, if you want to stand, and raise your hand, repeat after me, I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution of this state...
And the Constitution of this state...
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of mayor...
Of mayor...
For the city of South Lion...
For the city of South Lion...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Maggie, Steve, and Lisa, if you want to stand, and repeat after me. I state my name.
I, Steve Kennedy.
Maggie Kurzweil.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution of this state...
And the Constitution of this state...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of council member...
Of council member...
For the city of South Lion...
For the city of South Lion...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Okay, congratulations.
At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address.
Good evening. Jim Hamery, 1189 Horseshoe Drive. I wanted to congratulate Maggie, Lisa, and Steve on a job well done. You guys are, will be doing very good, I believe, this next four years. And Danny, my hat's off to you. You are out there quite a trooper with the rest of us. I guess the guys had their area and the gals had their area, a very good job. I think this council has got a good mix, and they're going to do great things over the next four years. I look forward to it. Although I may not always be here, I will be watching every video, whether it be live on Channel 19, or maybe sitting in Ottawa, watching a rerun. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you for your kindness, Jim.
Hi, my name is Julie Nicoloff. I live at 62361 Arlington Circle. I want to make it quick. I work for People's Express, and I've been working 12 hours today, so I'm very tired. I'll make it quick. But I have an issue with the crosswalk that you guys put in by the South Lion Hotel. And where the crosswalk is, if you've got a big vehicle there, you can't see a pedestrian. And you can't see them if there's another car on the other side. So, the other night, I almost hit a lady, because she was dressed in all black, and she had her baby on her hip, and it scared the daylights out of me. So, that's an issue.
Okay.
So, I called and I spoke with somebody at the, here. They told me to call Oakland County, because it was on their side, and they said it was actually on your side. So, I know driving in Ann Arbor, they have a little button that they can push, and there'll be a blinking to let you know that there's a pedestrian, but it's unsafe, very, very unsafe. So, it's unsafe for the driver, and it's unsafe for the pedestrians, because we can't... See, what happened was, I think what happened was a guy was blinking its lights, and I think he was trying to tell me that there was a pedestrian, but it was actually a distraction, because I'm like, why is he blinking? But I'm thinking that's what he was doing. So, I just think there needs to be a light put up there, like in Ann Arbor, to let people know that there's a pedestrian in the walkway, because it's dark now, and you can't see them.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going home.
Okay, at this time, we will close public comment, and we'll move on to the discussion of downtown. Mr. Donahue.
Well, save a couple of things for the end here, but quickly, cool Yule, of course, December 6th and 7th. We would like to have it on the agenda for further discussion next meeting. Really, I think it's time that we address more consistent approach to the event, because for the last five years in a row, it's been passed to a different organization. And I think for consistency, for budgeting, for sponsorship. So, we would like to have it on the agenda to better understand how we budget for the event, and how we see that as a kind of a three-way process between the DDA, the city, and now the nonprofit. Again, it has some similarities to the Pumpkin Fest, as far as funding, but I think the public aspect of the tree, I think that clear, clearly, parts of the budget have to be designated for public and private, but I think we need to dissect that and have a good discussion next meeting. Just real quick, going through the events, Ladies Night Out. This is going to be a fast-paced holiday season. Ladies Night Out, November 15th, of course, it's this Friday night, 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. And so, we're excited. We've had a lot of people calling and a lot of plans, so it should be a great event, this Friday night. November 30th, Small Business Saturday, getting a lot of publicity out on that. We'll get more posters up this week. If weather cooperates, we'll get more posters up this week. We had our first public information meeting for the Downtown Development Authority on last Monday night, November 4th. It was fairly well-attended. We had a couple dozen people there. And we have another one Thursday morning, as required by the new law. So, it'll be 8:00 Thursday morning, City Hall, as the regular DDA board meeting. So, we tried to get an early one and a late one, so more people could attend if they chose. So, the other item is that we were very pleased at the turnout of the Veterans Memorial. We had approximately, I don't know, 350 to 400 people. And I think the day, we dodged a bullet with the weather, and I think it was a wonderful day, well-attended, and I know that all the veterans in town that attended were very pleased. So, we're excited to see how well that went. And of course, we noted that it's Phase 1. We'll be adding things in the future, and I'm looking forward to see that whole project keep getting better. That's all I have.
Anyone have anything for Bob tonight? Councilmember Dilg.
I was just wondering, on that informational meeting, how many of those have you had?
Just one. There's two required by the law.
So, that was the first time you've ever done it?
Yes.
Okay. And how did you publicize it? I only heard about it here, so I was wondering...
Well, we have to follow the clerks, the rules of how the clerk publishes any meeting. Lisa?
Yep. We actually had to send letters to everybody that was in, everybody that based towards the DDA. So, we sent out letters to everybody. We had it on our website. We had it on the calendar for the website, and it was posted at City Hall.
Okay. I just, there were some people there, but a lot of it was, you know, the people here.
Yeah, right.
So, I just, it's one of the things I'm just really interested in, is getting more people involved in two-way conversation, and that's not necessarily on you, it's on the public as well, but it's something that I heard a lot while I was talking to people throughout the election. So, it's just something that I would like to talk with you about, maybe even lend a little bit of my, you know, marketing help or whatever, to just try to get some more people involved in that, and talk about maybe the businesses too, for next time you do the survey, just to see if we can figure out some new ways to do things, to get more input.
Love to have more people involved. Love it.
All right, Councilmember Richards and Councilmember Walton.
Okay. I conducted some inquiries regarding the billing for the whole project with Lisa, no, Patricia Tierney, okay? And she cleared it up for me, but I didn't understand quite how the, everything went through the ledger, okay, from what was supposed to be donated funds. But I understand now, okay? In case anybody else ever looks at it...
Are you speaking of the veterans?
Yes, the monument. I did not understand it completely, but I understand it now. She made it quite clear to me. In case anybody ever asks you about it, we're all on board with it, okay?
Well, I think it'd be good to clarify it, so everyone knows. The monument that you see there, Phase 1, was entirely paid by sponsorship and donation. We received cash donations, which there was a special line item established by the bookkeeper with city manager's direction. And the vast majority of the approximately $50,000 value that you see there on the ground was really donated services, products and services too.
I have another question.
Follow-up? Go ahead.
I was amazed to see the bricks were put in, and in the way they were done, okay, with the names on them, okay, which, you know you're going to rewrite a few of them, but did you have to get a special contractor in there to do that? Because that's extremely technical, okay? Not anybody can do that, okay?
Monroe Landscaping does brickwork, and they laid those bricks. We had a diagram for them to follow. Our goal was to put them in exactly like they were. So, I took about 35 photos out of my phone for about six hours on my dining room table, and that didn't work. So, then we just had to make a diagram, grid it out, and write them in the right order, and we got it done correctly.
I can tell by the spacing and the blending that was done, that that was very difficult, okay? And it looks beautiful.
Sure, they did a great job. As we talk about those bricks, the earlier brick, the first ones that were done about six or seven years ago, have faded. That's a VFW project. While the monument is a city monument, the brick program has always been the VFW, and so they know they're going to have to redo those that have faded.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you. Hey, Bob, I think you guys did a great job. I just have one quick question in regards to the flagpole that you discussed at the last council meeting that was taken out.
Yes.
Did you decide where that was going yet?
It's really not our decision. I think it would be Parks and Rec, I guess, because it was on their property. It's at the DPW. It's in rough shape, but it's at the DPW for there.
So, have we considered our, has it been brought up to put that behind the first responder's bell and hang some first responders' legs?
I think it would detract. I think the flags around the monument, you know, we've had landscape architect, in fact, a plan for the area needs to be refined, and I know that Rob Vogel, and there's been brief conversation with Chris, but I think we need to look at that whole area by a professional, because I think the, another flagpole would clash with the monument.
Well, I agree that the whole area needs to be looked at. I think it's, especially now with our beautiful monument, it's looking a little dated.
Sure, yeah.
How's that? So, I would like to see that brought in...
Yes.
Given a little extra attention, a little love, just like we've done to the memorial...
Yes.
And maybe even add some of the same landscaping, kind of bring it all in together, but we definitely need to make that entire part of the park...
Yes.
A little more attractive.
Totally agree. And I think we'll get with Rob and Chris and start planning that for the future.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Bob tonight? Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Chief Vogel is out today, so we'll jump over to Chief Sovick for Chief's Corner.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to attend the Veterans Memorial Service yesterday, and I just think that the whole structure is just, it's first-class. I mean, you can't, it's hard to, it's going to be hard to beat that. I mean, no, it's a work in progress, but as far as other cities and other jurisdictions, that is just, it just stands out. It's just, it's about great job, and everyone that was involved, just, I was honored to attend that service yesterday, so that was awesome. Snow emergency's been declared immediately, earlier this afternoon until 8:00 tomorrow. We're not, we don't really want to be heavy on enforcement, we just, we got the word out there so that people can really move their vehicles and just, so the DPW can clear those streets easier. And finally, just congratulations to Mayor Pellchat, Councilwoman Dilg, Councilwoman Kennedy, and Councilwoman Kurzweil, four more years, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have anything for Chief tonight? We'll move on to the public hearing for the 2020 CDBG application. Paul, would you like to add anything to this?
Yeah, I'll do the explanation. Each year, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development provides funds to jurisdictions throughout the county for projects that meet their national objectives. Here in South Lion, we receive funds from HUD via Oakland County. This year's coming year allocation will be $29,552. Last year, the city designated funds to be used for the senior center in Haven. The 2020 CDBG application deadline for receiving the funds is Friday, December 13th. On October 13th, or October 31st, 2019, the city published a notice of the CDBG hearing, which tonight gives the opportunity for the hearing, public comments relating to allocating those funds in South Lion. I've attached for you the public hearing notice, allocation, and area-wide benefit map. Tonight, we must open a public hearing, hear any public comments, and then close public hearing, and at the upcoming meeting, we will present the 2020 application.
This time, 7:53, we will open up the floor for public comments on the public hearing for the 2020 CDBG application. This time, 7:54, we will close the public hearing for the 2020 CDBG application. On to new business this evening, appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'd like to make the motion to nominate Councilmember Kivell for the position of Mayor Pro Tem for the city of South Lion.
I'll second.
Lisa, do we do a roll call vote on this?
If you would.
I think so.
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Earl?
No.
Maggie?
No.
And Mayor Pellchat?
Yes.
Could I ask why everybody else was called by their first name?
I'm sorry.
With that, congratulations, Councilmember Kivell.
Oh, thank you.
We'll move on to new business number two this evening, appointment of SEMCOG representatives. Councilmember Kivell?
I'd like to recommend Steve Kennedy again. He's done a wonderful job for us, and I think you can continue with that.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Lisa, do you feel we should do a roll call vote on this as well?
Sure.
Okay.
Councilmember Kivell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dilg?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Walton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurzweil?
Yes.
Mayor Pellchat?
Yes.
I wasn't opposed to the first-name thing. Don't get me wrong.
I believe we have to appoint a alternate for that as well. Councilmember Kennedy?
I'd like to make the motion to appoint Councilmember Dilg as the SEMCOG alternate.
I'll support that.
Lisa, roll call vote?
Councilmember Dilg?
Yes.
Councilmember Kivell?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Walton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurzweil?
Yes.
Mayor Pellchat?
Yes. Thank you, Lisa. With that, we'll move on to new business number three this evening, first reading of ordinance to amend the South Lion Code of Ordinances to update the charge of domestic violence to make it consistent with state law.
Mayor, this is an item I asked to get put on the agenda, but it was, it originated from the police department. Apparently, when the domestic violence ordinance was made as local ordinance, it didn't fully comport with state law. State law calls domestic violence dating, includes a dating relationship, roommate, former roommate, child in common. But for whatever reason, the local ordinance didn't include dating relationship, and so in order to make it consistent for enforcement purposes, we just amend, this amendment simply adds that language.
Great. Thank you for that explanation. Does anyone have any questions for Lisa on that? I don't think so either. Councilmember Walton?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the first reading of the proposed ordinance amendment amending Section 58-51 to make it consistent with state law.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Walton, supported by Councilmember Kennedy, to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending Section 58-51 to make it consistent with state law. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? First reading passes. On to new business number four this evening, first reading of ordinance to amend the South Lion Code of Ordinances to update provisions prohibiting the use of marijuana in accordance with new legislation. Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, in November of last year, the legislature, well, the people legalized marijuana. We still have an ordinance on the books that prohibits it. So, this ordinance corrects that error in, brings it up to date, in that it prohibits it for minors under 21, which is consistent with state law. It also adds regulations that didn't exist before, again, consistent with state law. We're trying to keep it consistent for enforcement purposes, so the police department doesn't have to then pull up the ordinance and look to make sure it's, which one they should be writing under.
Absolutely. Does anyone have any questions about that for Lisa? Councilmember Kivell, go ahead.
The benefit to us is that we can charge locally then, and all the, whatever the fines and things come to us, rather than the state.
You get a percentage of the fines and costs. That's correct. If it's written under state law, you don't get any.
Right. So, there is an incentive.
Okay, great. Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 58, Article 6, offenses involving drugs to make the ordinance consistent with state law.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember... We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Richards, to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending various sections of chapter 58, Article 6, offenses involving drugs to make the ordinance consistent with state law. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading passes. We'll move on to new business number five this evening, first reading of ordinance to amend the South Lyon Code of Ordinances to update provisions prohibiting the use of vapor products and alternative nicotine delivery products by minors in accordance with new legislation. Lisa?
Once again, this is an ordinance bringing South Lyon's ordinances up to state law regulations. What's interesting with this one is that you had already had a vaping ordinance for minors in place. You were ahead of the game. The problem is, is that after you, then the state adopted legislation, and the penalties were different, and the terminology was different. So we have to update the vaping ordinance, and we also amended the tobacco and the terminology that was used under state law to make both the penalties and the terminology consistent.
Councilmember Kurzweil?
Yes, I would like to move to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending section 58-221 to make it consistent with state law.
I support.
Any discussion? We have a motion by Councilmember Kurzweil, supported by Councilmember Walton, to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending section 58-221 to make it consistent with state law. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? First reading passes. With that, we will move on to the budget this evening. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple things on the budget, but I'm just gonna talk about one because of the weather, so.
Thank you.
What I wanted to know, Paul, there was a, I looked at the budget in September after there was a discussion out here for the chamber breakfast in which you said that the school district was gonna pass, was thinking about passing a school bond, and some of the proceeds from that would be used to repair the building here. So I went back and took a look at the budget in September and tried to do some forecasting into, okay, so where would we be, you know, if, where would our finances be in terms of being able to levy additional mills if we wanted to look at starting to fund a capital improvement plan? So I don't have any details on what the size of that bond is gonna be. I have heard when I was out campaigning that it sounds like people were saying that they are hearing that there is gonna be a bond. My concern is, is that Ann Arbor just passed a school bond of $1 billion. $1 billion on a school bond. And I don't know what the school district is looking at, but I can only imagine the mills that are gonna be needed in Ann Arbor to finance that billion-dollar bond. I don't know if they're talking a half a billion here, or quarter of a billion, or a tenth of a billion. Who knows what it's gonna be? The compromise is, of course, that you have to support the schools and the bonds. But at the same time, if that bond mill is gonna be large enough, there is gonna be a point to what, to where we as a city will be able to pass on mills for our own city for infrastructure, you know, and funding that capital improvement plan. So I'm trying to forecast a little bit and was just wondering if maybe you could get some information on what the size of that bond is that they're thinking about. I would think that they're probably gonna have to have their mill determined. If they do in May, I don't know when they're even thinking about doing it, but maybe if it's May, they probably will have to have their mill determined by, I would say, February or March. So that would hit us right there in that budget season, so.
Yeah, right now, this speculative based upon, you know, them getting together, we were just discussing the improvements that needed to be done to this building, and based upon the allocations for the building, it's 58 percent, the schools, 42 percent us. And so I wanted to be prepared, if they are looking at doing a bond for their facilities, which includes this particular building, that we are prepared, based upon what our percentage is and what our allocation is gonna be needed, to make the necessary repairs at the same time for economies of scale. I don't know when they plan on meeting together, you know, I'm sure they're having discussions if they have, you know, within their board or within their other finance committees in trying to make that determination. But I just, people have been talking about things like this for a while, about improvements, but I know they have not made a definite decision about when they're going out or what those numbers actually are.
Well, did they definitely say that if they had the bond, they were definitely gonna spend some of that money here? I mean, is that something that we would need to get in writing from the school district, how some of those proceeds were gonna be spent? I mean, is that something that we would say, look, you, we supported your bond under the condition that X amount would be spent fixing parts of this facility? Is that something we get a sort of a, an agreement with them, that we, it's ensured that that's what's gonna happen? Or do we just sort of shake hands and hope that happens?
Well, their bond would have to be pretty detailed on what they're gonna be spending those dollars on. But I think right now, it's purely speculative based upon the timeframe for them doing that. I expect that we're gonna be knowing more that by the first of the year, you know, whether they decide to do it in May or another time, or if they even decide that they are going forward with that. But there is the agreement that is written based upon the percentages, and based upon that, we do have, because they do in fact own this building, I just felt that it would be in the best interest that we would be making repairs at the same time. And there is, you know, certain things that we share within the building, the parking lots and other areas and sidewalks, and there's areas that are definitely just ours within the building. But I'll get more detail once I do know that from the meeting with the schools, and I'm sure they'll still continue to involve us within those discussions after they've made a definite decision, whether it's their board or their finance committee or bond committee, whatever it may be.
Because we just have to be really careful about taxing. I mean, we can't tax people out of their homes. But I do understand the necessity for providing assistance to the schools too, so. Thank you.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Paul, the requested improvements that are necessary here in this building, okay, at least for the most part on our half of the building, okay, go back several councils, okay, not just the latest two, three, four years here. If we go about it, because, and different administration over there too, if we go about it and tell them, here's what we want to have fixed, and we'll pay so much money, here's what we'll contribute, can we be assured that they'll come up with their percentage, okay, to get this work actually done this time around, such as the handicap ramp and some, you know, circulation and one thing or another?
Well, we would have to meet with them regarding that, and, you know, perhaps the agreement of some sort needs to be enhanced. But what we've been doing over the last three to six months is reviewing improvements that need to be done to this building, based upon parking lot, based upon heating, electrical, cooling, windows, things like that within the building. So they're contractor, because they in fact do own this particular building, the one that they hire to give guestimates on those particular costs, I've met with them as well as school officials, and we would be working together to try to get economies of scale. So we will work and do in fact hire the contractors at the same time to get that work, to get that work done. Now, the question would still need to be raised as far as whether the bond would include all of our improvements, or it would be just their improvements. If it included our improvements, then we would have to work out with some sort of payback agreement. If it was just the improvements of their portion, which represents 58 percent of this building, then we would have to work out in details of how we would have to pay the contractor to get that work done also, as well as going out for bid.
Okay, I don't know. I would hope that we could get it in writing and get an agreement, okay? And if you and the school are gonna work with the contractor directly, then that's the best chance we've got, I guess, to hope for the necessary improvements that we need. I'll let it go at that.
Anyone else for anything on the budget tonight? Councilmember Kivell?
Well, obviously, you know, we're going, we need to worry about our best interests. So, I mean, the idea that we would not have somebody put a bid together for us, I think would be irresponsible. So just to check, if no other reason, what the school's relationship with their contractor is, you know, make sure that there's, everything is pretty much straight up. But we clearly can't allow them to improve their side, and us have a poorhouse over here. So we need to end up keeping up with, you know, so everything, especially the common areas, all need to be essentially the same conditions, so.
One other thing I did want to bring up, Mayor, regarding the budget, was just as last year, I asked councilmembers input to provide data on what they feel are some of the priorities for the upcoming year, and I did ask you to provide it within the manager's report. And I will be providing you a tentative schedule for moving forward for next year for the budget approval process. Would want you to look at that within the next couple of weeks. But do in fact get me that data, the information on what you would like to see with it as priorities within the upcoming 2020, 2021 budget.
All right, great. Anyone with anything else on the budget this evening? All right, we'll move on to the manager's report. Paul?
I want to update everyone on the Dixboro Road paving. They are working on the area south of Volunteer Park, so that area is closed for approximately three weeks. So the access to Volunteer Park will have to be obtained through the north. I want to be aware that planning commissions can be meeting on the 14th, or it was supposed to be on the 14th, but now it's gonna be meeting on the 21st. So they will be discussing and revisiting the Alexander Site Plan. And I did talk with council regarding our next meeting, we're gonna be going over the water plant, capital improvement plan. We'll have a presentation by the engineers from Hubbell, Roth, and Clark. And also, the South Lyon Center for Active Adults will be in attendance at a future meeting, discuss their programs and funded requests for the upcoming year. And that's all I have.
Anyone have anything for Paul on the manager's report tonight? Thanks, Paul. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. Okay, we will close public comment and move on to council comments this evening. Councilmember Kennedy, why don't you start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing tonight, I'd like to thank Councilmember Parisian for her service for the past four years on city council. She worked tirelessly on behalf of the residents of this city, always making the decisions that were in the best interest of the city and its residents. I will miss her professionalism and her perspective on the council, and wish her and her family the very best for the years to come. Also, on a personal note, I want to thank the residents of the city of South Lyon for returning me to the city council. I am honored and humbled to represent you once more as we work together to continue moving our great city forward. We have made significant strides over the past couple of years, and I believe even greater accomplishments lie ahead. I also want to congratulate Mayor Pellchat on his election for another two years, and recognize his accomplishment of receiving more votes than any mayoral candidate from the past six elections, probably well beyond that. I want to welcome Councilmember Lisa Dilg to the city council, and to congratulate her for receiving over 1,000 votes in the election, which is truly impressive, especially for a new council candidate. I know that as we work together with other key members of the council and the city, we will continue to build upon the successes that have already been realized. I also want to thank the other council candidates, Dana Johnston, Lori Mosier, Amber King, and Jim Hamadi, for stepping forward to help this city, and I would encourage them to stay involved and help our city where they can in the years to come. I want to thank that group of candidates, along with Councilmember Dilg, for conducting their campaigns in a professional and civil manner. Together, we had some fun experiences, shared some laughs from time to time during the campaign, and had a good time overall. I hope those experiences and relationships continue into the future for years to come. All the best, and thank you. And now, I want to congratulate Councilmember Kivell for being selected to serve as South Lyon's Mayor Pro Tem. There is no one more qualified nor dedicated than Councilmember Kivell to serve in that position. He has tirelessly served on this council for over two decades, and I know he will properly and professionally represent our city in that position should that need arise in the future. Finally, I want to congratulate Councilmember Dilg for being selected as the city's SEMCOG alternate. As the city's SEMCOG representative, it is comforting to know there is someone willing and able to step in and assist in filling the role and filling the role of SEMCOG obligation should that need arise. Thank you, Councilmember Dilg, for accepting that responsibility. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Richards?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't prepare my notes very well, but off the top of my head, I just want to say, I hope all of you get a chance to visit our monument, Veterans Monument out there. I was there yesterday for the ceremonies, and I estimate 200 people, that is my estimate, all of us were there, as I recall, that are here right now. And it was tremendous, okay? The only problem, sometimes you couldn't hear what different people were saying, but that's small potatoes, really. The fact that we had a turnout of that many people, and the beauty of what they actually created out there is immense, okay, in my opinion. And I wish everybody had a chance to see it. Next item I'll just mention, just outside the CBD, for those of you who may not know, Mo's Garage is vacating, and he's moving his business to Belleville, okay? But he plans on coming back, and he's bought a house, and he plans to live here in town. And I wish him the best, okay? He has his other business over in Wall Lake with a towing company. And the build, the front part of the building is going to be demolished, torn down, and the back part is going to be expanded, as I understand it from previous discussions with him. Anyway, that's a, Bob, that's an improvement, okay? You've done, worked hard on many things to be improved and progressing us along. I've kept close track on 113 Lafayette also. And I'm literally amazed, because I've been in it and around back, and the digging that went on, underground work, and it's just phenomenal to see that much work going on on an older building that's really difficult, okay? It's well over 100 years old. And it's a testimony to the dedication of the new owners to go the extra mile, because he's really gotta put himself out there to bring that up to the present codes in this town. Anyway, that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, there's the, I'm not gonna say a whole lot, because also in thinking of that weather out there, I just don't want to be here too much longer or keep everybody here that much longer. Thank our DPW workers for the hard job they're doing out there tonight. They're gonna be out there all night long, and it's a cold one. I know I heard on the radio this morning and this evening that they were looking to the weatherman to prove a few records in breaking them, and I kinda don't want to break those records tonight, so hopefully we can leave them alone. But congratulations to all the new council members, and also Councilmember Kurzweil for being back, brought back again by the people of South Lyon. There's a lot of smart people up here. There's a lot of knowledge up here, and a lot of things that we are just gonna keep getting through in the next two years.
Mr. Mayor, I'm excited to work another couple more years with you, so thank you. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Dilg?
Steve said mostly what I was gonna say, but I wanted to thank everybody for their enthusiasm around the election. I really felt that from the residents, people were a lot more interested and seemed to be more involved. And what a takeaway I took from hearing from people was that they really do want to see a council that knows how to disagree professionally, behave civilly, and basically get along and, you know, and I have personal vendettas. I'm excited about that. I think that the candidates, I want to thank the other candidates that ran, it was a really good, very positive campaign. Councilmember Kurzweil and I bonded over 10 hours in the cold and looked forward to meeting and getting to know some of the other council people as well. I also wanted to thanks my friends that came here to see me get sworn in in a horrible day. It was really wonderful to have them come. Really quickly, on the veterans dedication, it was wonderful. I wanted to make sure, I don't know if I, if it was, but I wanted to thank Dana Johnston for all her work organizing that as well. You know, she's a tireless community supporter, and really appreciate that. The other neat thing that happened during that time is Representative Haley Stevens was there, and she spoke with us afterwards about some grant opportunities that she would like to work with us on. So that's very exciting. It was great to have her there. Looking forward to ladies' night. From the buzz I've heard, it should be packed. I think there's gonna be a lot of people there. And I just wanted to remind people that Clonel Acres is also having an auction after. And I just wanted to remind people that Colonial Acres is also having an auction after that, a silent auction on the 15th in Colonial Acres. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dilg. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to congratulate Lisa and Steve on their election to city council, along with Dan. I also wanna thank all the residents of South Lion that have returned me to city council. And I also wanna thank those persons associated with my campaign for their incredible commitment to me, but more importantly, to the principles of honesty and truthfulness in governing and fiscal responsibility, free speech, and an open and transparent government. I had the best time in my campaign, I've been working on political campaigns for about 30 years. This was a very easy campaign for me, the message was very smart, and the message was very driven. For those novices out there, those are people that are driven by numbers, I don't think that you understood what my campaign was all about. Not gonna get into disclosing the campaign, my campaign strategy, but I will tell you that I have an excellent connection with what is very important, and that is with residents of the city of South Lion that share core values. Additionally, I'm extremely proud of my campaign, that nobody on my campaign engaged in any social media trash talk, which was not the case with respect to every candidate who ran. I made that very, very clear from the beginning, that anybody who worked on my campaign would not be allowed to enter onto Facebook, social media, and degrade another candidate or another member of city council. Additionally, I think my win is especially interesting to social, I mean, to political insiders, because I do not have a social media presence. So many people are sitting there scratching their head, how does somebody win an election with no social media presence? Some people said that I was lucky, some people said that it was miracle on ice. I tend to disagree with you. I won because I ran a very, very smart campaign, and I did what I needed to do to get re-elected, not elected, and there's a big difference in politics. I also was extremely, extremely smart with selecting certain individuals that worked on my campaign, and I thank them tremendously. I would also like to thank the outgoing councilwoman, and Glenn Kibble, for guaranteeing me on Saturday night, I believe that was November 2nd, that my base, no matter what the weather was, was gonna come out and vote for me. I have the most loyal and dedicated base to God, to country, to Midwest family values, to respect for law enforcement, and compassionate for those in need. There is one piece of my campaign strategy that I will reveal. I am the oldest of eight children. I have four brothers and three sisters, and let me tell you, if anybody knows how to fight for the last cookie in the jar, I know how to do it. Next, on, I'm gonna talk about Haley Stevens at the next meeting, it was a very positive talk I had with her when she called me Friday night and congratulated me, then I had the opportunity to meet her personally on Sunday, but I'll wait for that at another meeting. Tonight, I would like to close with on this Veterans Day. I send my prayers to the families who've lost a loved one in service to our country, who have lost someone to service, respecting our flag, and I also thank all those that lost their lives for providing me with the freedoms that I enjoy as an American serving here in this incredible city called South Lion. God bless our country, God bless our veterans. Good night, everyone, have a wonderful week.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. Councilmember Kibble?
Steve started off with the, what I thought was really important, to recognize Mary's role in the last four years. She's, she's been a delight, she's had fresh eyes on things that have been around for an awful long time and brought some attention to things that hadn't been getting served enough. I was really grateful to have, have a real nice kid sitting next to me, she was a pleasant person to just visit with, and, and she really did have the best interests of this community at hand. So I wanna congratulate her on her, her, her new family and being free to end up doing that without having Monday nights every now and then tied up, so good luck to her. I also wanted to congratulate everybody that prevailed in this last election, we've got a lot of work to continue doing, and I think we have a good crew to end up making some real good decisions. So it is Veterans Day today, and it's, it's unfortunate that the weather turned so brusque. Yesterday was a, a perfect day, it was, it still was chilly, but you could survive that. Today was, would have been a little difficult for some of the more frail veterans in the area, so I hope that they had their, their time yesterday and weren't exposed to the weather of today. But we do have a wonderful facility for them now, and I'm sure that everybody's going to end up rallying around that, and there'll be a great deal more interest in, and, and acknowledgement of veterans, you know, the other, not that the other place wasn't fine, but this is clearly a real celebration of our, our enjoying the fact that these people stood up for us and took care of business and that we're all grateful for that, so. And thank you very much for the mayor pro tem thing, that, that's nice, so, all right. I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Like everyone else said, I'm gonna try and creep this brief, but I do have a lot of things I wanna touch on because they are very important, but we'll get out of here after this. Briefly, on the incredible ceremony yesterday at our new veterans memorial, wow. Just very proud and humbled to be able to be a part of that, and it was just, man, if you missed it, I talked with Rich Perry before we went on here, that'll be on Channel 19 all week at 9:00 in the morning, and it will air again at noon. So if you weren't able to make it or you were tied up, it's available there, it's also available on the YouTube channel from the Cable Commission, I have shared that on Facebook, so if you're looking to see it and you missed it, I would highly encourage you, catch it and check it out, and those are the available sources for that. I was able to attend the traditional Veterans Day ceremony this morning, and those, you know, veterans are tough, and so there was probably a couple dozen of us out there, and it got cold, didn't it, chief?
Certainly did.
But thank you to them, and that's something I'm, I'm pretty sure that they're gonna keep going. That's the traditional day, Sunday was great, but, and you know, maybe we'll keep doing something on that day as well, but the traditional Veterans Day will continue to go on, our friends at the VFW and the American Legion and, and other surrounding groups made sure to echo that sentiment this morning. I wanna thank Dana Johnston. I went through a speech on Sunday and somehow failed to say thank you. This community is better off with you in it, and thank you for all your help with that because you were a strong liaison for what was a breakdown in communication at times between some important groups in this area and the city itself, so thank you. I also wanna thank Councilmember Parisian. Councilmember Parisian is, is a strong, educated young lady and is gonna go on to do some big things. I'm very happy for her and the new addition to her family. It was a pleasure to work with Councilmember Parisian. I never had to question if she had the city's best interests at hand, that was clear. So I wish her all the best, and I'm sure she's very excited to not be tied up here every other Monday, like Councilmember Kibble said. I wanna thank Congresswoman Haley Stevens for coming out, what a cool surprise that was. It was incredibly cool for her to be out here and, and calling those of us that won. It was a very pleasant surprise for our Congresswoman to be here. I also wanna thank Mindy Fernandez from Kathy Crawford's camp was also here, and, and I did not recognize her while we were out there on Sunday, so thank you to Mindy as well. One last thing before we get out this evening, next, in two weeks when we get back here, I will be considering re-reviewing the seating chart up here. So if any of you have any feedback on that, feel free to reach out to me, but we will be shaking up the seating arrangement here in a couple weeks. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, could I throw one thing in?
Yes, you can.
I'm sorry, I did wanna throw something out there to the city of South Lion and all the businesses. Cool Yol is coming up, and we are in desperate need of floats. If we don't have floats, we don't have a parade. So get out there, get your float going, it's not that difficult, and yes, while it's cold, we all get out and we all enjoy it, so I'm looking forward to seeing your float.
Great reminder, Councilmember Walton. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn this evening.
Move to adjourn?
I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a great night, all, safe travels to everyone as well.